Okay.
Robert.
Hey, it's seven oh three, that's called the April twenty six, twenty twenty three. One of the appeals in order, and it's chairman, vice chairman, we have it, regular member, secretary, Tom Manning, regular member, Joe Smith, and bring them up, Scott Rosado, and on the far end, Thomas Henry, the son of Boston Officer and planner. We're two out of the eight children today, at the time, so sure, read the call, those means. Once he's adjourned that the man is ordered, see, we'll ask the applicant and what their representatives to step forward, identify yourself by name and address, tell us what you're looking for and why. At the conclusion of your presentation, the board members probably have questions. At that point, we'll determine if there's any correspondence to be filed. At the end of that part, we'll ask the applicant, they want to make a final statement or rebuttal any data, after the second public hearing closes. We'll remain to discuss through deliberate, typically make a decision. You're welcome to remain, but no further comments, be a sub, once the public hearing closes, that's it. Cell phone, if you have one, should put it on five, please. And I think that's about probably right now, okay. Smack.
Okay, ZBA twenty three dash oh two, eight fifty three River Road, George and Mary Davis, applicants and owners, for a variance of section six point one dash three of the coastal resource setback from fifty feet to twenty feet from tidal wetlands to permit, she'd permit the construction of a driveway access and sightline improvements in number two seven one zero one eight four zero six two two six, RU eighty zone. And all the records have been found in order and was sent to proceed.
Thank you. Thank you very much, members of the board, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, my name is Will Sweeney, I'm a partner and a land use attorney at the law firm of Togan Carberry for New London, Connecticut, it's been a while since I've been before you, but I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm appearing on behalf of George and Mary Davis, who are the owners of a vacant parcel of land located at eight fifty three River Road, here in Grodd. Joining me tonight are George and Mary, who are in the audience, I also have with me Rebecca Nolan, Rebecca is their licensed landscape architect. This is probably one of the most straightforward applications I've handled in my twenty five years of doing land use here in Connecticut, so I'm going to try to be as brief as possible tonight, but it is a public hearing, so I do have a responsibility to build a record. My client tonight has submitted an application for a variance seeking relief from section six point one dash three of the town of Grodd zoning regulations to construct a driveway access within the required fifty foot coastal resource setback. As the board member indicated, notice to a butters has been provided, and the certification of that notice has been provided to the board per your zoning regulations. This is the site plan for the project for you, this was included in our application package. My clients currently reside per client in Mystic and are planning to build a single family home on this vacant lot, which is located on the westerly side of the River Road. Across the street, out of the River Road, are a significant tidal wetland area which runs along the westerly bank of the Mystic River. I have a photo of the road that I'd like to submit as an exhibit at this time. Take one and just pass it around, have that indicated as an exhibit into the record. Suzanne or anybody could have.
Yeah, Mr. Secretary will record it.
Thank you.
These are all the same photos?
Yes, sir.
So.
The same copy of it.
Well, mark this, I don't have all the stamps, do have all the stamps, the market exhibit one.
This is a photograph, the photograph before you is a photograph of River Road taken at the southern extent of the property, looking north of up River Road. To the left, you can see our wooded area, that is the vacant lot owned by the Davises, and to the right of River Road, you can see Bragmides on this, there, though that is the tidal wetland that comes up literally right up to the edge of the road, and it's all along the banks of the Mystic River. As shown on our site plan, you see that the house that's proposed to be built on the property is going to be set back a couple hundred feet from River Road, but it will obviously need a driveway access and a curb cut on River Road for access to the house. This is a scenic road and the, our driveway and the associated sightline improvements need to be made for the driveway, already been fully viewed and approved by the Department of Public Works and the Grodd Town Council, because this is a scenic road area, driveway cuts, non-scenic roads need to be approved, we went through that process earlier this year. The reason we're here tonight seeking a variance is that my client's entire property frontage along River Road is located within fifty feet of those tidal wetlands immediately across the street. Section six point one dash three prohibits any new construction, including specifically driveways, to be built within fifty feet of coastal resources such as tidal wetlands. These tidal wetlands across River Road are located just beyond twenty feet from my client's front property. Obviously, the development of this parcel for any reasonable economic use, including the proposed single-family residence in this single-family zone, requires some type of a driveway access point on River Road. Further, the construction of the driveway, no matter where we locate it, whether it's located anywhere along that frontage, would take place within fifty feet of those tidal wetlands and would violate section six point one dash three. The bottom line is, absent a variance from this board to reduce the coastal resource setback to twenty feet, our client could not build the driveway and could not reasonably access their lot, and thus have, would have no reasonable economic use of their property. The hardship that we have cited in our application is the physical configuration of the property in light of the adjacent tidal wetlands and the regulation that prevents us from building a driveway in their proximity. That constitutes, from our perspective, a clear legal hardship that is entitled to relief by this board. I would also point out for the record that this variance will have no negative impacts on surrounding properties, and if you go up, down the road, there are dozens, if not, you know, there are dozens of driveways on the westerly side of River Road and some even on the easterly side of River Road that are within fifty feet of tidal areas or tightly influenced waterways. I would also point out that this is the minimum variance that we need to be able to obtain reasonable use and be able to install a conforming driveway for the property. For those reasons, you know, we strongly believe and assert tonight that the variance has to be granted for this property. I want to thank you for your time and attention, Ms. Nolan and myself are available if you have any specific questions about the project. George and Mary are also here, if you have any other specific questions, but I would reserve the right rebuttal after the public comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Bill.
No questions.
No questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, thank you.
The property that we're talking about, what is the size of the property? I'd like to have that.
Sure, it's just about an acre in size. It is what we would consider a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It existed in, as a building lot prior to the upzoning of this property to RU eighty that happened during the comprehensive rezone. Under the regulations, we're entitled to build a single-family dwelling on it, as long as we meet all the setback requirements, which we can do.
And I think I saw a lot of surveyor stakes, so the land was that part of? I did a site visit.
Okay.
And I didn't obviously find that any property, any house on the property.
Correct.
But I saw some surveying marks, pink stakes and things, is it was?
You had the, you should, just introduce yourself, come up and sit down so the tape can get you.
Just trying to make sure I was at the right location, I think that was.
My name is George Davis.
Yep.
I resided two places, ten eighty five near Rich Drive in Hershey, Pennsylvania, but I also own a count of Condon, gravel street, and seven gravel street. The old Masonic Temple.
All right.
And the severe stakes that you saw that come up next to the left side of the property.
Yeah.
We had the, before we kind of cut in, we want to make sure that contractor didn't go over from the adjacent property.
So I was at the right location.
There and they're just outlining where that property line is.
You're just defining this, this southern property line.
And a couple of other questions I had. Are we talking about the sketch or that's in the package where the orientation of the driveway is?
Yes, this driveway, as shown in the sketch, is the driveway that's going to be constructed.
So are we tying? You're looking to have this variance for the entire coastal access or?
We're asking for a variance to reduce the coastal setback from fifty to twenty to put in that driveway.
For that, so if we, I guess what I'm saying, or where I'm going with my, is if we, as a board, limited it to the site plan that you stated showing where the driveway was going to be, it's just that I'm not that comfortable in just giving extending a variance for the entire thing, because I'm sure you don't want to put more than one driveway in.
And it's, I think that's absolutely reasonable, I think many towns now make sure that their variances are linked to specific lands, because they don't want blanket.
That's where I'm going with the.
Yeah, there's no problem with that for two reasons. One is, that's certainly how we intend to proceed, so we don't have a problem with that. But also, we went through the DPW and the town council process already, which was a public hearing process, and that's what they approved as well, so if we wanted to change anything, we'd sort of have to start scratchy. We spent a lot of time, we spent literally months going through just the scenic road process, so we have contractors that are lined up, ready to go, we're ready to start building with this design, so we would have no objection.
To tie it to the site, whatever you call it.
You could, you could tie the, as shown on the attached plan or down the submitted plan.
That way there, for some reason, you enjoy it so much, but then you decide to go to Florida, and somebody else buys it, wants to put another garage there, they don't like where you put it in and want another driveway, that's not going to all of a sudden just go with.
They'd have, they'd have to come back here and modify it in another variant. I think that's a very reasonable request, and if you wanted to, for the, the variant condition, or just the way you worded, to make sure that it refers to the submitted plans, if it's consistent.
I had another kind of, this is a dumb question. You, you don't need the variance to cut trees and?
No, no, the variance is about actual construction activities and the direction of structures and improvements on the property, the variance, the coastal resource setback does not talk about servants, moveable vegetation, we are removing some vegetation for the sightline.
But that's not even an issue.
It's not, it's not material to this discussion.
I lost it.
Oh, so was that an in on wetlands issue?
No, so those, those wetlands across the street are tidal wetlands.
I understand.
And so, under state law, tidal wetlands are under the exclusive jurisdiction of the Connecticut DEP. Inland wet, inland wetlands commission has no jurisdiction.
Okay, all right.
At all, and unlike inland wetlands where they regulate a buffer area, tidal wetlands do not have it, so you'd have to actually be working across the street in the tidal wetlands to trigger a DEP.
You need a DEP?
No.
Thing to clear out trees in that area, no?
No, because we're not clearing anything east of the road, we're only going to be doing some very limited clearing north of the driveway so that we can have a good sightline to the curb, there's a S.
Yeah, no, yeah, I rid my bike there, I know.
We had to work very closely with Mr. Hanover at DPW on our design, make sure we had added the sightline, we had to demonstrate that, you could see it on the plan, we put the distances, we had to get his approval of clearing to make sure that it's safe and out of sight.
Okay, and that's why I was questioning the vegetation, because you were so specific in your plans.
I was.
Trees and?
Because those, these plans were really made for dual purposes. First, for the scenic road approval, which talks about trees and has trees within its jurisdiction, and then your use on the issue of coastal resource setback. I would just say this too, is that driveway is not moving, because if you quit north, any farther north, you don't have sufficient sightlines, that driveway is located at the only safe place on the property, so there really is no concern from our standpoint. Somebody might have this property fifty years from now, they're not going to be able to put a drive down the north end unless somebody reworks River Road north, makes it straight, which isn't going to happen.
Just for the record, for Zoom purposes, the plan we're referring to, the pointing to is page seven of the file, so it's been submitted.
Great. Can you point out where the fifty foot line would have been, what is at this point, so?
Yeah, so right now, so twenty feet is the front property line, so it's basically in the front yard right here, fifty foot setback.
Is that that?
It's not, it's not, there's no dotted line there, I guess. But fifty feet will bring you right back to this point. So it's basically, it runs with the curvature of the road, so it's basically the first thirty feet all the way along the frontage.
Okay. All right. I get a couple more questions. And just for the record, there's no other access to this property other than from River Road, because you're surrounded by open space on the other side, correct?
There is no other access, it's either privately owned or public open space behind us.
And could you read to me again what, your wording of the hardship that you're claiming?
Sure. The hardship is, is the unique physical configuration of the property in light of the adjacent coastal resources. Absent a variance to reduce this coastal resource setback to twenty feet, our client would be deprived access and thus reasonable economic use of their property.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's that.
I, I don't think that property was first proved that there was such a thing as coastal resource management, was it? Do you know?
The Coastal Resource Act came in the seventies, and I don't have the full title background on this property, but it's very possible to go over this case, yeah.
It's like zoning, the change in zoning, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the change in zoning was just a couple of years ago, just the purpose of the property.
This is probably for us, it's been a while since we dealt with the CAM report, but because of its proximity to the river and the stoniness across, the stoner can have to be notified?
It doesn't, and it's actually, this project is exempt from CAM, so CAM site and review is sometimes required out of variance unless the activity is exempt. In minor modifications to residential property, including the, the construction of a single-family home, as long as it's not on the water, and the amenities that go with a single-family home are specifically exempt by both state statutes and the local regulations, there is no CAM review for this. If this was, for instance, a retail store, then we would have a CAM review, but because it's a single, a single-family home that conforms to the setback requirements, we do not need, and it's not on the water itself.
I was just going to say, if you own property across the street, like some of the properties do.
Like if, if we were trying to do this same project on the other side of the road, so we got the house sitting on the water, CAM review would be.
That's probably what, yeah, confused me, because we've had a couple of those where there are houses on the water and they've had to entertain stoniness, and the feds don't have any involvement in this, right, I mean, it's a coastal estuary.
Yeah, so the feds would not have any involvement unless you were putting bill into, into napable waters, private engineers may have some jurisdiction there, but again, we're up and we're on the other side of the route.
Making sure.
Absolutely, good question.
Yeah, you know, there's one driveway to the left of this property, and there's one, two, three, four to the right, all in the same proximity as this driveway is, so. Yeah, the attorney's suite is correct, you don't have enough driveway, can use the land. Plus you have somebody else's property, this is power, it's not going to happen. It was one of the thing. No, what? I have a mail.
I didn't see anything in the file.
Or what? Comments? The Planning and Zoning Commission had no comments on it, and just to be what you were saying, from the residential property card, since it's a big lot, there's, there's no dates of construction, but the last recent sale, previous recent sale was nineteen seventy nine. So the lot's been in existence since, at least, since that.
Is there Public Works letter or something that says they reviewed it or resolution from the town council in the file?
You have anything, I don't have anything.
Let's see what I have with me tonight. I can, I can represent to you that the town council has approved the scenic road, and that has to go through the Department of Public Works to do that, see what I have with me tonight.
What exactly, they approved?
Under the, yeah, so under the court of, court of ordinance is any work within town right of way on a scenic road has to be approved by the town council.
Okay.
So we had to approve it, I don't think I have the actual approval letter from the town council with me. I can vouch for it.
Okay.
Certainly is, it's certainly happening, and we worked very closely with Greg Hanover, in fact, we modified our plan and our, the move of trees and some grading of north of the driveway at his specific construction.
Okay.
Also, Deb Jones also reviewed these plans as well.
I just read, Planning and Zoning Commission wouldn't have had no comments if it didn't go through.
Anybody to speak in favor or opposition to those requests? Hearing none, just wondering, any final comments?
Just, I appreciate always the opportunity to appear before you, and hope that we have a favorable action tonight, because I know my clients are very eager to try to begin to start work this year and hope of being able to move into their house in the spring of two thousand twenty four, so it'd be great if you kept with tonight, thank you.
I think I, Tom had a concern about moving the driveway, and I'm looking at the way that's configured, because of the elevation of the property, it's pretty touchy for a driveway to drop down, so it's sort of gradual upturn around.
Yeah, and, and you can't, you can't, I would, you can't move it there either, because then there's not enough distance between the driveway and the curb, it's in the picture there.
Yeah, I, I think if we have a condition that ties it to that site plan.
We're then, we're more than, we can more than accommodate.
That, that kind of locks it in, puts me in a comfort zone.
Absolutely. We have no comment at all, I think it's a very reasonable condition.
We'll make sure that that gets into the.
Final questions? Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you.
For your move on to the next one.
The next variance, ZBA twenty two dash oh three, flash car wash, four twenty one wells. For the record, the mailings have been, they've been bound to comply with the plan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is John Casey, I'm a partner of the public. Representing EP Development, the applicant this evening. We're here requesting a variance that would allow stinger puns, murder car wash, a newly developed subdivision parcel, subdividing parcel on, well. With me on the Zoom, the other name's Vincent Corzio, is the principal of EP Development. Steve Cottol is our engineer. They're both not local, so my suggestion of, of attend virtually, but they're available to answering questions if it arises. So the site, I made a misjudgment, I thought we were going to be in the room where we could project things up on the wall, so I didn't bring big boards. I have a few extra copies of the plans if people would like to see them.
I think all the numbers have got.
Okay. Well, just so a little background, this height, this site, it's four twenty one twelve between the Kia dealership up there and Cardinal Honda, and it's, the land is part of a subdivision that goes back to the early nineteen seventies, that then we subdivided and reconfigured over the year. It's in the commercial regional zone, the CR zone. Earlier this, this year, we applied for a resubdivision approval. The existing lot is five point six five acres, that's the Kia dealership and the area to the north of it. The area to the north is going to be the new lot two, that's two point four acres. Both lots will comply, bound to comply with the zoning regulations, they're both in the water resource protection district, and they meet all those requirements, including have to, they'll be able to have twenty percent of the land remain natural, seventy percent maximum in curvial surfaces. But the interesting thing about this lot is it has frontage on both Pleasant Valley Road south and, well, it's been like that since it was created. The proposal is that access to any development on the new lot two will be from twelve. Also, just in terms of compliance with subdivision regulations, the applicant proposed a fee and move open space. There are sidewalks on twelve, and there's existing sidewalks on the west side of Pleasant Valley Road, the Planning and Zoning Commission agreed to a waiver, so that sidewalks will not be required on the east side of Pleasant Valley Road on this property. There was also conditions of approval regarding trees, all the utilities for this site will be, it'll be public town water and sewer, utilities be underground. And, as I said, in the end, February twenty eighth, the P and Z approved some labor requests and approved the lot, so we have a, we have an approved subdivision line. It. It hasn't been recorded yet, that doesn't have to happen until June, but we're here tonight to keep the, the ball rolling on this development proposal. So, as I said, the proposal is to build car wash, or what's called a vehicle washing facility under your regulations, which is a permitted use with conditions in the CR zone. There's very specific conditions listed in the zoning regulations regarding minimum lot size, water recycling, stacking spaces, water and sewer, building surfaces, vacuuming facility, storage, waiting areas. A, the facility can comply with all those conditions, one condition that this lot cannot comply with is automobile access, which is in section five point one dash E two, which says automobile access into the building should be positioned so as not to be visible from the public way. Given that this lot has frontage on two sides, there's no rear yard, so however you were to orient car wash, the entrance to the tunnel would be visible from a public way. Couldn't, whatever way you twist it, even if you turn it sideways, you're still, you're going to see it from two public ways, so the, the proposal is to develop it as, as though it had a rear yard and to have it access at the rear with group twelve being the front, considered the front of, of the development. In our application, we talked about the hardship as part. In our application, we talk about the hardship, uh, this parcel has unique characteristics. As I said, it has two frontages. Which results in two front yards, no rear yard. Uh, this characteristic. Characteristic, excuse me, specifically affects this parcel. As I said, it existed before and after a resubdivision. As I said, the, the. Resubdivision just cut off the northern. Portion of the existing lot. It, it wasn't resubdivided to create a unique feature. That, that creates this difficulty. It, the entire lot. Fronted on two streets. Uh, it does not generally affect the C R zoning district. It's not every lot in the district has this feature. And. Car wash is being a permitted use with conditions. It would be impossible to, to establish that use. And comply with section five one thirty two. Because of the two frontages. So we would say that the strict application of the regulation is all exceptional. Exceptional difficulty. Said, no matter how you turn the building, no matter how you orient it, the access will be visible. Variance is also have. Not substantially impaired. As I noted before, um, the closed development applies with all of the requirements. Car wash is in a single alignment as it would be if the parcel had a rear yard. Expect you're looking at it. Twelve. Um, this one other unique. One of the existing topographical features here is shown on. Survey. Uh, with the grading. The land slopes from Pleasant Valley Drive down to well. Um, it's actually about eighteen foot difference from Pleasant Valley down to well. And then uh, floor level, which this will be in the floor level of the car wash will be ten, twelve to be lower than the ground at Pleasant Valley. So this rate is dropping rate plus the intent to. Create evergreen screening along. Pleasant Valley Road, I'm sorry, will. Result in. The, the. Entrance to the building to the greatest extent possible. Being less or as little visible as possible. I put it that way. As I said, the point, and then you can see it on the development plan that was uh, in your packet that sort of lays out the, the site plan. Uh, that whole. I'll call it the rear yard, like the front north of Pleasant Valley. Were required by the subdivision's approval to have street trees on that. Uh, along that frontage, but the intent is actually for a thicker um. Vegetation buffer so that you won't see the backside. And in addition, just talking about landscaping, there's also landscaping requirements on the front, which will also stop the view of the building from. Also. To grant a variance. The, the. It can't substantially impair the intent, purpose or integrity of the plan of conservation development. Under section one point two, just purposes in the plan of conservation development, there's a number of factors like protecting. Provide for public health. To guide future growth and development in the town. This is in the route twelve commercial area note. Development type there's retail and service commercial. Sure you've all been on the twelve. You know, this is a very. Uh, sort of commercially intense stretch of road. It's, this project is really just an infill. Big spot. On that road. Uh, and otherwise in terms of the character. And of social and economic stability of all parts of the towns, we feel this is fitting. This proposal in that section of town. And it will also help protect and conserve the value land. Value buildings improvements on the land. So with that. We feel that it complies. Town zoning regulations to the greatest extent possible with the plan of conservation development. And. Given the unique characteristics of the lot. Uh, variance is warranted. I'll end with just one issue because which is. Something I started out with, the subdivision plan has been approved, but it hasn't been reported yet. That's not due until June sixteenth. There was a question, sort of a chicken and the egg about whether that should be recorded first or if we can get the variance. And I would just. Submit to this board that. If you're inclined to grant variance. It, it would be acceptable. We think it's reasonable that you say that the variance. Doesn't become effective or can't be. Recorded until the subdivision is recorded because the intent is that this variance would apply just to the new lot two. And not apply to the whole Kia dealership. So is that? Have you to answer any questions?
No, I guess I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. The. The variance that you're requesting for us is specifically related to prohibition. That. The entry to the wash be, can, it cannot be, excuse me, I don't want to be double name. The prohibiting it any entrance from being seen from the street. Isn't that correct?
Right.
So that's, that is what you're asking us.
That's what we're asking.
Okay, I'm good. Um, are, are, is there going to be retaining wall in the back there on the Pleasant Valley side of the building there? Since you're going down from eighteen feet down.
Actually, if we can. Uh, if we can have Steve Cabral just put his hand up. He is our, in here.
I can, I can allow him to talk. Okay.
Oh, Steve, Steve, yes. Right then?
Yes.
And Steve, if you can identify yourself for the record.
Oh, yes, I'm Stephen Cabral with Crossman Engineering. And we are working with the, the applicant. In regards to the rear. Of the prop, well. The Pleasant Valley side. Uh, because we have considerable horizontal distance from Pleasant Valley Road. To the parking area. We believe that we have, we have sufficient space so that we could have a gradual slope down from Pleasant Valley down to the site. So at this time, we do not anticipate a major retaining wall. If during the final design, a wall is needed, it would be no more than five feet. And the only reason we would propose a wall would be to. Allow us to maximize the amount of landscaping that's. That we will propose to buffer the view from Pleasant Valley Road. And you know, as we stated, one, one of the benefits of the topographical conditions. Is that with the car wash being ten to twelve feet below Pleasant Valley. With the ability of us planting an evergreen screen. That could be planted. Initially with seven to eight foot tall evergreens. That the entrance into the car wash is going to be well buffered.
And question. You talked about conditional approval under the. In the zone, is, uh, can I assume also that? The W R P D. Um, allows a car wash with the, with conditions, correct?
Correct. There's specific conditions, uh, for car washes in the W R P D. We've been through them. I, I refute them. And I think probably Steve has as well that I, my understanding it, we can comply with all of them. We. You know, feel those are going to be a problem. They're like recycling water. You know. Uh, and other water conservation. Requirements.
Yes, again, this is Steve Cabral with Crossman Engineering. Yes, there are specific requirements and the intent is to fully conform. And we recognize that we do need to go through the full site plan review process, you know, with the, with the town's planning and zoning commission.
Okay, but the zoning commission approved it with, with conditions or the planning and zoning?
The planning and zoning commission approved the subdivision to create the lot. We still have to go back to planning zoning to get final approval for the.
Conditions. Yeah.
For the car wash.
In that, in that zone.
Right.
Correct.
But there was no. We, we had to resolve this issue before we went to them because.
If you can't do this one, you can't do that.
Okay, we could, we got. Nine out of ten or, you know, ninety nine out of a hundred, but missed that, missed the one because. Because of that rule requiring that access to the building not be positioned so as to be visible from any public.
Okay, thank you.
How?
One question. You said that. The rear part on Pleasant Valley. You're not going to have the sidebar. Sorry, is there a sidebar on Pleasant?
Yeah. Sidewalk on the opposite side, yeah.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, and that's, and we, yeah, we. That was part of the, what we went over with planning and zoning commission and it's on the west side and it runs the whole length of the road, at least along that stretch. So. So I didn't think it was really worthwhile to have. Even in two hundred feet of sidewalk to nowhere on this line.
So I guess my next question is. No matter if the fact that you want to put a car wash here. If you didn't have Pleasant Valley Road there, you'd still have to come. Or through twelve.
Correct. Yeah, the access would always be from route twelve. If, if, yeah, if this was a regular yard.
So it's really looking at. The way the lot is situated, you couldn't. Reorient. The car wash. To comply with. With twelve. Would make it, either way, it's really narrow. In order to do it, to do that. I mean, we could cite that the lot fronts on two streets, but really it's. You're oriented the size of the lot would.
Correct. Um, I guess I read and my understanding was automobile, automobile access into the building was the. The entrance.
Correct.
So you could, you'd be able to see the exit from the twelve. You wouldn't need a variance from that.
Oh, okay. I, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's, yeah, you don't have to screen. Both. In and out.
Okay, so what you're saying is. You wouldn't need to.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't have needed a, a variance if, if there was no pleasant.
Okay, just.
It would be like any other car wash.
Correct. So. Let me back up then. So that means you, you're looking for the variance from the. From Pleasant Valley Road rather than from Route twelve, correct?
Correct. Yeah, to allow that, to allow.
To allow the entrance.
Yeah, to be visible from.
From Pleasant Valley Road, okay. Because the zoning regs don't say anything about the exit. Being facing the road, correct?
Only the entrance, yeah. Access automobile access into.
Alright.
Doesn't use the word entrance. It just says automobile access into the bill.
Alright, thanks. Same thing.
Which is.
But what are they going to do with the water that they? Wash the cars with? Are you going to put it in a sewer? They're going to recycle it or what?
Uh, I don't know if we can. That, that goes with the.
That's, that's the W R P D stuff.
That goes with the W R P D review, the planning and zoning. Well, doing, it's usually typically a recycled system.
Recycle system, yeah, Ben, Ben.
I don't know, Ben or Steve want to speak?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Um, yes, we do, we, we recycle about a third of our water. And um, and the rest does go to the sewer. Well, actually, let me give you a little more detail. The rest of the water um, goes through three settling tanks and oil water separator. And then goes to the sewer.
Ask to do that by.
Yeah, that, this, this state, the state regulates all that.
Oh. No questions, thank you. I didn't see anything.
Uh, the planning and zoning commission had no comment on the application.
Nothing in the file. Okay. Uh, final comments. Sorry, Casey, I guess. Inter speaking there.
No, no final comments. Just again, thank you for your attention.
Final questions? Okay, all appearing closed at. Seven forty five. Max could be hitting. Pretty sharp. Okay.
It's like a gas station. That stuff has to be. All code.
Scott. How many is upriver road?
Oh, oh, River Road, we're discussing. Um, let me go back to that. Well. In my mind. Could be wrong, but given the. When the lot was. Allowed to be born, uh, it's prior to. The zoning in that area. And so the. But also the. In order to have a. A reasonable sightline and, and be able to access the, the road to get onto the property. It appears to me just graphically that it's um. It would be impossible to put that anywhere else and. And it's so close to the wetlands anyway, even if it was a. You had a straight sightline all the way down, wherever you put it in, you're going to be within that proximity. So. Um, I, I'm in favor of approving the request. Doug?
I just think, I agree with him, but basically that. The configuration of River Road in that title wetlands. In order to develop that lot. They need this variance. I think the, the, just the whole geographic configuration creates the hardship. That warrants granting variance.
I, I would agree and I'm more of a comfort zone. Conditioning it on. The site.
Site plan.
Plan. I think I caught page seven. Tom, does that make sense?
Yeah, page seven.
So page seven, just. You know, just so that it's. It's, I heard. Didn't have a problem. Puts me in a more of a comfort zone. That. You know, at least historically, that's the tie to granting the variance.
What? I agree with those guys. Well, I'm not going to disagree. Somebody here make a motion. I agree with them. Somebody here make a motion.
Time to do it because he's the one that wants to. I'll make a motion that we grant the variance as requested. Subject to. The.
Yeah.
Location being. Location of the driveway being as. Page seven of the site plan.
Is there a cycle? Lloyd? I second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All is fair. Okay, that's. So while Tom. What, Tom, did you catch all that?
Yeah, I mean, I have it to approve based on uh, page seven of the site plan and the reason is the location of the lot, as far as the variance is to access it. I'll pass these around once, once we're done with both of them.
I don't have a problem with two twelve outside and they're going to compete with the other car wash. Maybe it'd be a better one. That could you call. A downtown. Great. Okay. Uh, Tom.
Uh, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's. It's unique. To, to that lot and. If we're talking. The back, you know, you're going to have a car driving into the front. You're not going to have it driving out through the front. Well, you could come up with some scheme, but it would. So I, I'm in favor of this.
So.
Yeah, I was, I, I think you should grant.
Yeah, me too. It's uh, the uh. To me, it's simple, the, the prohibition. Um, it, it, given the prohibition, it would be impossible to put anything there that had.
Given the prohibition, it would be impossible to put anything there that had access, because it's, as it was pointed out right from the beginning, you'd see it. No matter whether it's on Pleasant Valley or or Route twelve, so I'm in favor of approving the variance.
I moved that we grant the variance as requested from section five point one dash thirteen E two. Which states that the building should be positioned so as not to be visible from a public way. I believe the variance should be from the public Pleasant Valley South. Side of the lot, we're granting the variance to have an entrance to the building at that point.
Uh, no, hang on, let me just. Pass these around. Everyone approve these unanimously, so under signatures, you can just. Add your signature. Uh, I have no other words.
Of course, no correspondence. Uh, management April twelfth, so we're in a package.
I wasn't there, so I I shouldn't.
Make more to approve the minutes submitted.
You're here. Yes. Discussion. Whole business.
Uh, there's one application for. Uh, it'll be for thirty five Grand Long Point Road for lights at the athletic fields, so that'll be at the next meeting. Lights, uh, athletic lights, stations. At the athletic fields.
Our fish all the way down here, right up there. I know, I know, I just came from baseball game. Okay, but that's how they want, it's there or all the way down.
And I believe it's just for the middle school fields.
I'm so entitled for me, it's a horrible design that field, it's pretty field.
Yeah.
But you have people, if it wasn't for Saint Mary's, people park, most of the parks are down pitch.
And if you remember, that was a big issue.
That was a big issue.
And I see all the people parking in the pool lot. Yeah, that's gonna be a problem.
They be, they. He must be last night. So there's no way to help the park, all locals. Okay, uh, what we.
Uh, we have, that's, I actually have one thing for. For report staff, we had the one meeting that was in room three. And we just wanna, the audio came out really well, because it's more of a condensed room and sure picked up. And it seems like usually this room, it's kind of wasted, there's just a lot of empty space, or is everyone fine with the? Meeting being in room three, was that more convenient or?
If you have something like Walmart, putting it up.
Then we could move it if if it was a big application.
We got this whole big room here, I would say, you would only, let's say there were three or four applications, you might then want to say. But otherwise.
But even we had two and we still.
What about room two? To use.
Room two is sometimes used, yeah, at the same time by the Inland Lawts Commission, I believe, so they usually have. Yeah, there's.
You know, if you get.
It's a little more intimate, so work on, we can hear really well in the.
It was, and if you got people that are. As long as there's flexibility, all of a sudden, you look out there and places.
Right. We could change our default room to room three. And then if need be, come here if something happened, but nothing's happened for the last, there hasn't been a big application like that in four or five years.
Right, yeah, yeah, if there's some contentious application where you expect a mob of people, then you have to do it.
Right. Okay, if you wanted to make a motion, second, we could have it transferred over there.
Make a motion, what's the number again, room number?
Room three.
I I make a motion that we. I didn't finish my motion.
Um, here, I'm gonna fast, that's the exhibit. That was a staff report.
I have no staff reports, but you have the assigned. Those are copies.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who moved?
And Tom, you've got the word, I won't be here.
And I can't, won't be able to.
Okay.
I hope to be open.